Welcome everyone to this Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, meeting of the Braintree Town Council. Based on the fact this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, all folks will be by roll call. There will be some opportunities for the public to address us tonight or to address certain issues tonight. If you would like to speak during those public hearings, please use the raise hand function. Or you can text 339-987-2726. Again, if you want to be, if you don't have the raise hand function available to you, you can text 339-987-2726, which is probably the quickest way to get ahold of us if you do not have the raise hand function. You could also email questions to towncouncil@braintreema.gov. I will be chairing this meeting tonight. President Hume could not be here. So with that said, Clerk Samino, can we please have a roll call vote to begin the meeting?
Council Berica?
Here.
Council Connors?
Here.
Council Flaherty?
Here.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin?
Here.
Council O'Brien?
Present.
Council Ringus?
Here.
Council Ryan?
Here.
Council Sasha?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Clerk Samino. Moving on to announcements. I would first start with what we're calling 04920 from the council president as to the Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee. I believe that Sandra Kuntz is here with us tonight. And if I am not mistaken, I believe that her title is the Braintree representative to that authority. The reason this comes up is some of you may have seen in the news and for those watching at home that there has been an ongoing issue with plane noise that has affected a neighboring community of Milton. There has been some ongoing discussions over the years about how to mitigate some of that noise. And part of that plan that has been sort of announced would be the possibility of redirecting flights in three different areas. One of those areas would have a significant impact on Quincy, but also on Braintree. I thank Ms. Kuntz for sort of bringing this to our attention. There was an article in the Patriot Ledger. Ms. Kuntz has asked me to sort of quickly address what that article spoke of. And there has been a letter that has been prepared from the council as well. So really quickly going over the article that was in the Patriot Ledger for those who are not privy to it. The mayor of Quincy and the city council has blasted plans to reduce plane noise in Milton. Mayor Thomas Koch and city councillor Brian Palmucci are bashing a plan to reduce airplane noise in Milton, saying it will only push the problem to Quincy. Milton residents and officials have spent years working on solutions to airplane noise caused by flights using Logan Airport's runway 4R, which carries aircraft directly over their town. In a letter to Massachusetts Port Authority officials earlier this month, Koch said the most recent proposal by Milton's Massport Community Advisory Committee Representative Thomas Doherty would shift the flight path to runway 4R in a way that negatively impacts the residents of Quincy. Milton residents have been fighting to get out of Logan Airport's flight path for nearly a decade, fiercely advocating to use different paths to more equitably distribute the burden. Doherty's proposal offered three path alternatives, one that takes planes over Braintree and Quincy, one over Norwell and Hingham, and one over West Quincy and Marina Bay. Koch wrote that Quincy already has a high exposure to aviation noise and pollution, and the city of Quincy vehemently opposes any proposals to further shift the burden onto the city of Quincy. Any proposal to increase air traffic over another community simply to relieve existing air traffic over one community should not be an option. Palmucci, who again is a city councillor in Quincy, said the proposal would direct air traffic over the entire city from the border with Braintree to the border with Boston. He said Milton's proposal failed to come up with long-term solutions and instead would push its problems onto Quincy. He says, "We need regional approaches to solve our collective issues, and those do not come from pitting one community against another." He also does not see the wisdom in solving a problem for 25,000, that being the population of Milton, by moving the problem to impact 100,000, which is the population of Quincy. Palmucci, who represents south in West Quincy, said Milton is pushing his problem onto a less affluent and more minority community. He goes on to say that the proposal is not a solution, but an organized effort to shift pollution-causing traffic from an affluent town onto a less affluent city. He said Milton is a predominantly white community seeking to alleviate their problems by shifting the burden to a city with a high minority population and a medium-income half of Milton's, and he believes that it is shameful on its face. Obviously, this plan would not only affect the city of Quincy, but also negatively attack the town of Braintree. And I think, again, as Council Palmucci indicated through his remarks, this is an effort that needs to be addressed in a regionalized way and not just by shifting it onto another community and definitely not shifting it onto our town here. There has been a letter that has been drafted dated December 1st, 2020 from the town council. It is addressed to David Carlin, who is the chairman of the Massport Community Advisory Committee, Colleen DeLaSandro, who is the New England Regional Administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration, as well as Lisa Wieland, who is the chief executive officer. The letter from the county that is subject to the council being sent out reads, "Dear Mr. Carlin, Ms. DeLaSandro, and Ms. Wieland, I am writing on behalf of the Braintree Town Council in the town of Braintree to urge this committee to reject the proposals recently produced by John Hansman of the Massachusetts Institute of Technology at the behest of the town of Milton. As part of the Block 2 study being performed by Dr. John Hansman of MIT under contract with Massport, it is my understanding the town of Milton has made proposals to modify flight paths for Logan Airport arrivals onto runway 4R. To our knowledge, these proposals were not fully evaluated by Dr. Hansman for impacts on Braintree or any other neighboring impacted community. These Milton proposals, if implemented, will have an adverse impact on the residents of Braintree. As you know, the town has been and continues to be impacted by arrivals on 4R and 4L. In addition to the impacts of the existing air traffic, the air and noise pollution is increased by the local MBTA and commuter rail stations, as well as daily traffic through the various major roadways in our community. As a result, any proposal to increase air traffic over the town simply to relieve existing air traffic over another community is not an option. Further, this is contrary to the mission of the Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee as it seeks to place the interests of one member community over another. The town has been a member of MCAC since its inception, as well as a member of the MCAC's predecessor, the Logan Airport Community Advisor Committee since 1996. Through our longtime representative Sandra Kuntz, the town has advocated for the best interests of our residents while ensuring safe and efficient air travel to Logan Airport. With that in mind and the concerns raised regarding the most recent MIT proposals, the Braintree Town Council requests Representative Kuntz to vote in the negative with respect to said proposals." That is signed by the town council's president, Shannon Hume. We are also CC'd Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator Ed Markey, Congressman Stephen Lynch, Senator John Keenan, Senator Walter Timmeltie, Representative Mark Cusack, Mike Dennehy, who is the Milton Town Administrator, our own mayor, Charles Kukoros, as well as the entirety of the Braintree Town Council. With those two items read, Ms. Kuntz, I see that you are here tonight. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to any of that. You're on mute. Can't hear you. Now, your mouth is moving, but we can't make out what you're saying. So I can see that you are very excited about what you're saying. It looks like you're very vehement about what you're trying to say. We can't hear what it is, but we will submit this letter. We thank you for bringing this to President Hume's attention. Did any other members of the council want to weigh in on this or offer any opinions on it? All right. Seeing none, would we have any issue with submitting that letter from President Hume? Seeing none, it's not an item that necessarily needs to be voted on. So with no issues from any other of the members of the council, we will have Clerk Samino send this letter out to the addressed parties, David Carlin, Colleen DeLaSandro, and Lisa Wieland, signed by President Hume. So thank you, Ms. Kuntz, again for bringing this to our attention. Again, this is not something we want to see, although we are mindful of the noise pollution facing Milton. It is not Braintree's issue to deal with this by absorbing noise from another community. So thank you.
Mr. President?
Mayor Kukoros?
I just wanted to let you know that on November 5th, I drafted a letter similar to the letter that you have there. And you know, Ms. Kuntz has done a great job for many years trying to fight the air traffic that's been flying over Braintree. And she is authorized as our representative to vote in the negative in regards to these proposals. So from the mayor's office, for myself, we have, we support Ms. Kuntz in voting in the negative and trying to stop this increased amount of traffic and having it pushed onto our community. Our community already has enough air traffic flying over it. And I think that her efforts over the years have been great, and we need to continue to fight to make sure that we protect our community. So I just want you to know that we are, you know, we support 100% her efforts. And I just want to thank her for her work. And we are as well CCing all of the members that you listed in the letter as well. So I thank the council for supporting our efforts in trying to block this from creating more pollution and noise here in Braintree. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Kukoros. Obviously, thank you and your staff for their continued stewardship on behalf of Braintree. And hopefully, people will hear our words on this and not detrimentally affect our town. We are still in our announcements period. I do have an announcement from Sean Powers and Jen Longabardi. So I take a minute to read this. At our last meeting, we heard Mandolin about the ongoing various benefit the less fortunate in Braintree's community. COVID has obviously had a very detrimental effect on many communities in Braintree, many folks in Braintree in terms of jobs. And so the need is even greater this year as we approach the holiday season. We had a very successful drop-off pajama drive last Saturday at the town hall, which continues. Pajamas can still be dropped off, but there are two other events that are coming up that, again, to help us work together to ensure that everyone has a good holiday season. I think the thing that I always love about Braintree is the fact that we oftentimes, we can fight with one another, we can pick each other apart on Facebook, and even here on the council, we sometimes snipe at each other. But when people are in need, this town always comes together. And I think we have two big events coming up to really show that we are going to be there for the people that need us. So the first is the Braintree Dine-In for Christmas event. That is going to be held this year in place of the 11th Annual Braintree Christmas Party. Anyone who's been part of our town knows that every year at the Granite Grill, we have a huge turnout of folks in Braintree with our local sports teams, with our public safety personnel, and we fill up the Granite Grill with presents. For anyone who's never seen a mountain of toys, every year we put together a massive amount of toys to give it out to members of our community. Obviously, COVID has decided that we're not going to do that this year, but we still need to make sure that we're addressing these families. So this year, I would read from the announcement that has been prepared by Ms. Longabardi, Ms. Cannelli, and Mr. Powers. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we are unable to have our traditional annual Braintree Christmas party this year. In an effort to keep the momentum going and assist the Marge Crispin Center, a dine-in reservation-only event has been organized for the night of Thursday, December 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Granite Grill 703 Granite Street, Braintree, Mass. This event will be similar to any indoor dining you've experienced at your local restaurants over the past few months. COVID rules and regulations will be followed to ensure everyone's safety. Masks are required for entry and should be worn when walking to the restroom. Tickets can be purchased at www eventbrite.com by typing "Braintree Dining for Christmas" event in the search field. So one more time, that is www eventbrite, and "bright" is spelled B-R-I-T-E.com. And in the search bar on that website, typing "Braintree Dining for Christmas" event. Due to COVID, gift cards and denominations of $10 to local stores and restaurants are being collected instead of toys to limit contact and handling. Reservations must be purchased ahead. There is no walk-in seating and no reservations sold at the door. This is to eliminate any unnecessary foot traffic from coming into the restaurant. Reservations are being sold $25 per person and are purchased by table. This allows guests to control who they sit with for safety reasons. Tables available with two seats, up to 10 seats per table unless already sold out. To further ensure everyone's safety, the total amount of reservations to be sold will be under the restricted COVID capacity of the restaurant with all COVID regulations being adhered to that incorporates social distancing requirements. Again, face coverings are required at all times and not seated. The price per each entry includes a family-style dinner. All proceeds from reservation sales and donations will go directly to the Marge Crispin Center. Another opportunity also exists, if you can't make it out to the meeting, for us to help, and that is going to be Saturday, December 5th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Braintree Police will once again be partnering with the Brewster Ambulance to fill a cruiser with gift cards at Braintree Town Hall, 1 at 1 JFK Memorial Drive. All gift cards donated will be brought to the Marge Crispin Center. At this fill-a-cruiser event, complimentary coffee will be provided by New England Coffee, and hot chocolate with cookies will be provided by Montelio's Bakery. It's important to note that the demand for assistance is the greatest it's ever been this year, with many requests being made of the program. The annual Christmas party was started over a decade ago as a way to celebrate the holidays and offer a way for our community to give to others in the holiday spirit. This might be the only chance a family has of giving their children something for Christmas. It is important that we continue to support fundraisers benefiting our community, especially during these challenging times. The organizers of the Braintree Christmas Party hope that they will be able to bring it back for a 12th Annual Braintree Christmas Party in 2021 as traditionally held. But this is what we have this year, and hopefully people will stay involved and keep this going. They wanted to say a special thank you to the Granite Grill and staff for the generous donation of the venue for this event and their continued support throughout the years. They are, as always, thankful for their generosity. So with that said, there's a lot of upcoming events to help out the less fortunate in our town. And it's important. I think they summed it up pretty eloquently there. This might be the only chance for a family to make sure that their kids have gifts under the tree on Christmas. So it's important that we all come together and we make sure that this comes to fruition again. I know that there is one other event coming up on Saturday, December 5th. And I don't want to steal the thunder of it because this is a fun one. So I think Mayor Kukoros is still here. Mayor Kukoros, did you have an announcement?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. So this Saturday, we are having the annual Christmas tree lighting right here at Town Hall at 5:00 PM. Because of COVID-19, we will have a drive-in style event with limited space. So there is a sign-up that's required. And will be utilized in the Town Hall parking lot, which will open at 4:00 PM. So attendees will remain in their vehicles, and we will have hot chocolate treats that will be distributed to you in your vehicles. And we will be playing your favorite Christmas songs. And we're anticipating a very special guest from the North Pole will be joining us to light the tree. So anyone that would like to attend can sign up by visiting braintreema.gov. And we will be holding this event rain or shine because folks will be in their vehicles. So it will take place. We're looking at, I don't think we're going to see the white stuff, but we may have some rain. So we're looking forward to lighting the tree, and we're doing a lot of decorating here at Town Hall and trying to make things the best we can during this 2020 season. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Kukoros. The lighting of the Christmas tree is always a fun and great event for our town. So thank you that we're going to do it in a COVID-friendly way. I believe Dr. Fauci said the other day that that guest from the North Pole is COVID immune, so he can jump to everybody's house this year and we don't have to worry about it. And are you going to be wearing a Santa hat at the Christmas tree lighting?
If you request, I'm sure I can find one.
I am with the night, but I'm going to make it a request that you're wearing a Santa hat during the Christmas tree lighting.
Can't mess up the coiff.
You got it.
Thank you. With that said, do any other councils have any announcements tonight? And if I miss your hand, just wave at the camera. Seeing none, I think we can move on to the approval of minutes of October 6th of 2020. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Ryan. I had a second. I believe it was from Councilor Borica. Clerk Samino, can I have a roll call vote?
Council Berica?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Eight in favor.
Thank you. That is a unanimous vote. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Moving on to communications and report from the mayor and town boards, starting with 01220 from the council president, COVID-19 updates. And I believe that Mary Beth McGrath, our Director of Municipal License and Inspections, is with us today, as well as other representatives from the mayor's office. So Ms. McGrath, I would turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Council Ringus and council members for allowing me to join you this evening. Again, I do appreciate the opportunity during your meetings to be able to update you on where we are with COVID in the community. So as of today, we have 1,503 confirmed cases, total cumulative cases in the community. Today, we had 23 cases. So we're definitely seeing a spike. I can't say that the spike is what we'll see, the full depth of the spike that we'll see as a result of Thanksgiving and possible gatherings and travel opportunities. But the difference between the meeting that I attended on the 17th and today is 189 cases. So we've seen an additional 189 cases between November 17th, some two weeks ago, and today. So it's clearly increased from my last visit with you, which the total at that time, from the November 4th meeting to the November 17th meeting, was 126 cases. All of these cases are 100% in the community. And we don't have any active cases in long-term care assisted living facilities, which we're really pleased to hear. We are concerned about it being 100% in the community. We do have households that have multiple family members or multiple household members that are within one household that are positive. So that's a very big concern of ours as well. We continue to stress and ask that the message be sent to take all precautionary measures to prevent the exposure to coronavirus by the use of face coverings, social distancing, hand washing, and sanitizing, etc.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. McGrath? I don't see any hands raised. I guess the only question I would have, Ms. McGrath, is in terms of, we obviously, it's 100% in the community now, and obviously there's certain HIPAA sort of restrictions on what can be revealed. Do we have any idea, like, is it just kind of spread throughout the ages now? I know for a while we were concerned about sort of people in their 20s. It's sort of, we're kind of carrying it. Do we know where it kind of resides now?
We are across the board. Our youngest case was yesterday at eight days old, which is very concerning. The majority of cases that we're seeing seem to be within between the ages of 20 to 30. And then now we're seeing cases between the ages of 50 to 65.
All right. So I think we, as a community, are coming into a time where we are going to be in our normal interactions, interacting with our family members. I think as we, Ms. McGrath indicated, continuing to be mindful of our surroundings, mindful of our face coverings, of social distancing properly and proper sanitizing and hand washing procedures. I know there was an announcement from Governor Baker today that at this point, no further restrictions are being put in place. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we are doing the right thing. People have been affected detrimentally by this from a health perspective. We have lost many members of our community. We also see many that are being financially impacted. So we do need to ensure that we are doing everything in our power so that we can get ourselves back healthy again and ensure that our economy is moving strongly. I do see that Council Borica has raised her hand, so.
Thank you very much. Director McGrath, are there any plans to have the testing site come back to Braintree High School? I know we had it maybe about a month ago. Is that something the state will be sending back our way?
Well, that was a request that was put in by the school department.
Okay.
Because there were concerns associated with activity that we were seeing in the school system. So if that were to happen again, then yes, we would ask the state to see if they can send down the mobile unit. But at this time, we haven't had a need for that.
Thank you.
Any other councilors have anything they wish to ask or add? Seeing none, Mayor Kukoros, do you have anything you wanted to add on this update?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, I just want to thank Ms. McGrath and her staff for not only dealing with the new surge, but continuing to do a great job at contact tracing and really getting down to the nitty-gritty and making sure that everyone is protected that's exposed. So I want to thank her for that. And you know, also, you know, I put an order out a couple of weeks ago, and it requires, it's a pilot program that we're doing here at Braintree to have nursing homes, long-term care facilities, assisted living facilities, do weekly testing of their employees. And to this point, I think there was one case that we caught that, you know, may not have been caught on the two-week testing that the state requires. So I'll say that we have a great Board of Health and Health Department, and Mary Beth has done a great job leading it. And as we surge, you know, you can see that she's calm and relaxed because, you know, she's kind of stared us through some of the toughest times. And I think that as we move through this next phase, I'm sure that once vaccines are available and all of those things that Mary Beth will be at the front line, making sure everyone gets them. So I just want to, once again, thank Mary Beth and her staff for all the hard work that they do. And it's not something that was really a big portion of their job prior to COVID, but they've been able to do all of their regular duties as well as take on this COVID responsibility. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kukoros, and thank you, Director McGrath, for all the work and the work of your staff.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mayor Kukoros, we're going to stick with you. You're the star of the show, I believe, for the next couple. So 05020, council president, update on the Peterson Pool.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a long time since I got to talk this much at a council meeting, huh? But, well, I'll just say that, you know, when I took office, you know, one of the goals was to make sure that we move forward with the Peterson Pool/Brink complex. It's important for us to accomplish this. So that's been the goal all along. It was my goal as a councillor, working with Mayor Sullivan. And, you know, we have Mr. Kukonis on this Zoom meeting as well. He is a developer and, you know, began the work in January. And, you know, we've had some delays, obviously, partially because of drainage issues. The calculations that were approved and put together, you know, at the time were believed to be adequate. And, you know, once you get into doing a project, sometimes you realize that you have to make some modifications. So that's where we've been at. We've had that's where we've been at. We've had many meetings since, since January. And I remember one of the first meetings was in the trailer, and, you know, it had rained quite a bit. It might have been, probably was back in January. And it was literally Sunset Lake was all around the trailer. So it was obvious there was, there was some drainage issues and that they needed to be addressed. So over time, Mr. Kekonis, basically, we talked about the drainage and finally came to the conclusion that we needed to address it. And he did so. And on November 10th, he modified the special permit so that he added in the proper measures to increase the amount of drainage. And the next step would be to move towards foundation permit. There's a few other things that that need to be done, but foundation permit gets us to an area where we can, you know, where he can start getting closer to doing construction of building. And, you know, the overall goal has been all along to, to really just to get this project done. And, you know, it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Kekonis. He's done everything he can, even during this COVID-19 pandemic. Obviously, we can't make any, you know, exact estimates as far as time-wise, because we don't know how the pandemic is going to affect the construction as well as how the winter is going to be. But, you know, Mr. Kekonis wishes to move forward and has the approval of the planning board with these modifications. And, you know, I'll say that the, the overall goal, and I know there's been conversations and in the past, you know, several months. But realistically, the goal is to get it built, and that's what Mr. Kekonis wants to do. And I support him 100%. So, you know, if there's any questions in regards to scheduling, I, you know, I believe, you know, we had a conversation the other day, and and hopefully by the spring, we have a building up, and and by the fall, we have a rank in there. There will, there will be two ranks, but that's the goal. And the most important thing for me was that, once we saw that there was a drainage issue, which, you know, wasn't necessarily something that anyone could have anticipated initially when the plans were done. But once the work began, it became evident that there were issues with drainage. So, you know, it was important for us to put it through the process. So some of the delay was the fact that when we, when he went back to the planning board, there was a peer review that was done. So we have at least three sets of engineering eyes looking at, at these plans. And they look to be good, and they've been approved. So that's a real positive. And from this point, it's, it's just a matter of Mr. Kekonis moving forward with installing that drainage and eventually putting in that foundation, getting the permits. He'll be going to Building Department for that. And, and then constructing building. I know that he's already acquired some of the materials. I think most, if not all. So, you know, I look forward to working with him on this, and we'll con, we will continue. Mr. Kekonis and I will continue to have our conversations as we move forward. And anything that comes up, hopefully, the building that goes up, we'll be able to come back and report, you know, major progress to, to the council. But if anyone has any specific questions in regard to the building, Mr. Kekonis is part of the Zoom. And, and I'd also like to thank my Chief of Staff, Nicole Tobb. She's done a great job working through this, as well as Planning Department and the Building Department to keep us to keep us going, keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Make a Course, for the update, and thank you, Mr. Kekonis, for being here on the Zoom call. Do any members of the council have any questions or comments they'd like to make? I have a, I'd call on Council, District 4 Councilor O'Brien.
Oh, we even got the district. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we're not gonna debate it here, and I probably faux pas by bringing it up, but what I both know, because we grew up here, we went to the high school, that that part of the, the high school is an ocean when it rains. So for that to come up now, if it can help in any action we have against any other situations going on, that just is very disappointing that 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 kind of drainage concern comes up now. And again, I don't want to debate it. You don't even have to respond, but anybody that grew up here knows that that place is a pool over there, you know, when it rains like this. And so it's just disappointing. And I just say good luck to the developer, and I hope things move progressively. And I appreciate your stewardship and your leadership.
Thank you, Council O'Brien. I would move on to our District 6 Councilor, Council Mackin.
Thank you, Council Ringus. I see Council Connors has her hands up too, and I'm probably gonna be a few minutes, if you want to let her go first.
So, Councilor Mackin deferring his time. Councilor Connors of District 3.
So I just have a couple of questions for now. With the changes that were made in the drainage plans, was there a cost associated with that? And if so, is it to the town, or is it to the developer, or? What is the status of that?
Mr. President?
Of course.
Thank you. Counselor, thank you for the question. That cost was borne by the developer, Mr. Kekonis, as well as the cost of the peer review. So the town did not pay for that.
And as far as the drainage and the issues that they did find, is that gonna have any effect on the size of the pool that's supposed to be built for the facility?
Nope. The plans, Mr. President, again, the plans are the same. They have not changed as far as the size of the pool or anything else within the facility.
And I know we've been waiting, or I've been waiting to see some sort of interior design plans for this facility because it's kind of up in the air right now, and there's nothing out there on the street. Do we have any, what is the estimated date to start looking at interior plans of how it's gonna be designed and built? Because I know it's changed from the original.
I would, you know, I would defer to Mr. Kekonis as far as if you still want, I appreciate it. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, President. As, as of now, since we've got the drainage system redesigned, we have our elevation set now. Now we can start the process of finishing the design of the building, because the problem was, we have the building, the size of it, and the intact of the building size already dimensioned out. But the problem was the height levels and all that. So now we're starting to with the foundation drawings, and then from there, we're gonna start the interior drawings. So, you know, timeframe-wise, I'd say by sometime in January, we should have a set of drawings to show to the, as we go along, we'll first, we'll show the, the foundation plans. And after that, we'll start showing the interior, the designs of the building on the inside. We've had preliminary drawings done, but we haven't finalized them until all the elevations are set.
Okay. And what, so I know originally it was supposed to be a full-size Olympic pool. Are we still shooting for a full-size Olympic pool?
I believe it's set at a junior-size Olympic, I believe. I don't, I can't recall. I don't have it in front of me. But I think it was, it was a 15, I think it was a 25-meter pool. 25 meter. I'm not
That's okay.
Chief of Staff, Tobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a junior Olympic-sized pool as required by the ground lease.
Is that the modified or the?
The size of the
Was any changes made from the original?
Not to the size of the pool, no. The only changes made in the, when the lease was modified was in relation to the financial contribution from the town, which was reduced, and the dates were updated.
And also the side, the going from two full rings down to one and a half rings was also a modification, correct? I thought I saw that in the paperwork I saw today.
That was part of the modification approved by the planning board shortly after the assignment was effectuated.
So I'll have some other questions, but it's based on the original contract, how it was voted for, or how it was proposed for a full size. And then we went to a junior and how that incurred, because there's no paperwork on that. That I can see documentation of how we got from a proposal of a full size to a junior size in the final documents. I think that's all I have for now. I did send some questions into Nicole, into the, to the mayor's office concerning some documents, but I'll have more questions when I get answers to those.
I did receive those, Council Connors. I would note that a lot of the questions predate many of us, they go back to when it was originally awarded in 2014. So I'll do my best to pull together responses and documents and kind of reach out to individuals who were involved at the time. But at first glance, there may, there may not be documentation. And so if that's the case, I certainly will let you know.
Yeah, I mean, they all should be contractual documents that are filed away and being required to be kept for so many years. So I would assume they're still around, especially because it's still an active contract file. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
So long, Council Mackin.
Council Mackin, if you're okay with it, I'm gonna defer past you, because I do know you're gonna be a couple of minutes. I did see that Council Flaherty has raised her hand, so I'm gonna go to Council Flaherty first.
Thank you. That makes sense, because my questions have an awful lot to do with what Council Connors was just asking. In the original RFP that was issued on this for, in October 14th, what's described is a junior Olympic-sized pool, which is 75 feet long by 70 feet wide, with a tw, with a diving area with 12-foot depth. And I'm just, what I'd like to understand is whether this pool is going to have a 12-foot end that could be used, because it makes, the reason it makes a difference is because if it does, then this would be a pool that could be used by the Braintree High School Swimming and Diving Team. And if it doesn't, then this is not a pool that the Braintree High School Swimming and Diving Team could use for competition. And I really think that we should be aiming for a pool that could be used, because it would be such a shame for the Braintree High School students to, like, leave the high school, drive to a place where they pay fees to use for practice and competition, and wave to the pool that, you know, we built for our Braintree kids on the way. So I can't tell from the plans that I looked at online, the depth of the pool. I can only tell the number of lanes that it has, and I'm, I just want to know for sure whether it's gonna have the 12-foot end or not.
I don't know if there's anyone, can anyone respond to Council Flaherty's question in regards to the depth?
President, I can jump in on this one. Paul Quakinos here. The, we're not going with a 12-foot depth. We won't, it's just a, there's no diving board gonna be installed. Because of the subsurface, there'd be too many issues going down that deep with the water issues we're having on, on the site.
So which document permits you to make that change? Because that is not how it was originally described in the RFP, and I, which I understood to be a legally binding document.
Mr. President.
Chief of Staff, Tobb, sorry.
That was a modify, that was a determination that was made by the prior administration to allow the project to move forward without the diving well, given the condition of the land and the overwhelming information from everybody involved, that it was not feasible, given the, the condition of the property to include a diving well. The original intention for the pool was for members of the community to utilize the space and have a place to swim, where they could be free from concern of passing boats. So while I appreciate and very much understand the benefit it would be for the swimming and diving team to be able to host competitions at this facility, the intention was for community pool, which is certainly met by the, the objective that is met by the existing plans. The swimming and dive, the swimming team certainly can continue to utilize the pool for practice, and that is something that's built in as a priority into the lease. If they host meets, they will lose points under the MIAA standard. So that is the impact of not having the diving well, which has frankly never been part of the plans, at least as long as I've been involved in the project.
Thank you, Chief of Staff, Tobb. Council Flaherty, any follow-up?
Only to say that I, I disagree that this is, that this meets the spirit of, of the, of the will, and also to comment that it certainly was included in the original plans that were put forward. And the change, while it may not be the, the, a decision that was made by people here today, I find it very hard to, very disappointing, because I, I think, I think it betrays the fundamental purpose of this pool, which was to serve our children. That's all.
Thank you for your comments, Council Flaherty. Council Connors, I see you've raised your hand for the second time, but I'm gonna recognize everyone for the first time first. So Council Mackin of District 6.
Thank you, Acting President Ringus. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this update today, and thank you, Mr. Quakinos, for joining us. Mr. Quakinos, before I get going, I want to be very clear. I understand that you inherited the situation that you inherited, and you're not responsible for it. So please do not take anything I'm gonna say to be directed at you. But I do think, you know, while we need to focus on going forward, the reason we're in the situation we're in is because of a colossal failure by the previous administration, and we're not doing any good just ignoring that. We need to acknowledge what happened and fix it to make sure it doesn't happen again, because you know what? We have another very large project coming up, a self-middle school, and just pretending nothing went wrong and moving forward doesn't do justice to the residents. So I want to go back to the last meeting where I said that reiterate a point I was made, that greater oversight was needed with this project, and let me explain why in more detail, and then I'll make some proposals. So over five and a half years ago, the town of Braintree signed a land lease agreement with Five Capital Management, also known as BSC Partners, to get this complex built. But here we are. By comparison, their academy also signed a land lease agreement with the developer, and within two years, they had something fully constructed and operational. At our last meeting, when I asked the auditor if he had followed up on our invoices to see if we received fair value for what we paid for, his only response was that it was part of the contract. I thought that was strange. Looking at the, closer to the contract, it did indeed allow for the fact that for a situation for three years, no construction had to take place, but we would keep making payments. This begs several questions. Like, why didn't Mayor Sullivan sign this contract? Did the town solicitor at the time, Peter Moore, read the contract? If he did, why did he allow Mayor Sullivan to sign it? Did the Chief of Staff, Joe Reynolds, raise any objections when after three years of making payments with no construction being performed, we paid an additional $300,000? It is also important to note that the same time the developer, David Boucher, was being paid by Mayor Sullivan for not constructing a complex in Braintree, he was actively constructing a similar complex in Attleboro. This complex opened in January of 2017. Were we aware at the time we hired him that he was otherwise engaged? I think it's an undisputable fact that a lack of oversight was a major problem here. Let me provide a little example that sums up the sloppiness of this entire project. On all seven of the invoices, we paid BSC Partners totaling $11 million over three years, the word invoice is spelled wrong. It's spelled invoive. Are we really expected to believe that an appropriate level of professionalism was involved in this project? Was anyone really taking a close look at any of this? At our October 6th meeting, when I, when the auditors presented their report, I asked whose signature was on the checks that were paid and who approved the payments. This is something a real audit would have looked at. However, they were not able to have that answer the question. Instead, we were told of a general review process that most municipalities follow. Even when I twice requested to see copies of those checks, they were never provided to me. I guess we just have to hope the review process for the checks is better than the review process of the invoices. Now, I'm gonna switch to the topic of the current project manager, PMA consultants. Now, according to the report by our internal auditors, PMA was paid $74,171. However, the town of Braintree vendor history for PMA, which was obtained by Freedom of Information Act from a resident, shows a total amount paid to PMA to be $105,140. So for starters of my questions, why is there a $31 discrepancy between what the audit report says and what the So for starters of my questions, why is there a $31 discrepancy between what the audit report says and what the vendor information says? I don't know if that's best for the mayor or Chief of Staff Tob.
Solicitor, I'm sorry, Solicitor or Chief of Staff Tob?
Either one. So I don't believe that Mr. McGoldrick asked me for any documentation with regards to payments made to PMA, so I don't know where that, where he received that information.
No, a resident received them for the refoyo request from the mayor's office. I've looked at them. I have them. So why did the audit not look at certain payments? If so, why?
I can't speak for the auditors, but I can speak for that documentation because I was the one that sent it. So that came directly from the accounting office. But as I said, and I, I can't speak for Mr. McGoldrick or his team, but I don't recall him inquiring about any of those payments from me.
So let me get this straight. So we had an audit of payments that were made for the project, but it's missing payments. And that, am I correct? Is that basically what you're telling me?
Respectfully, I'm telling you that I can't speak for the auditors. I can only speak for the information that was requested from the mayor's office that was provided.
Let me ask this. Is it because was money paid from the town to PMA consultants or did it come out of the Peterson Trust account?
Pays to the consultant were from the Peterson Trust account.
Does anyone else think it's acceptable that our auditors, you know what? This is a friggin joke, this order and everything. Let's move on. All right. So we need to implement a more rigorous oversight for this project. There should be clear milestones set, meaningful milestones, not the sort of milestones that allow our project to drag on while money gets spent and nothing gets achieved. Expenses should be clearly tracked and made public. So I'd like to propose an evaluation committee to oversee this project. The committee will consist of a representative from the council, representative from the mayor's office, the building department, along with the project manager. Our milestone set must be approved by the committee. All invoices received must be approved by the committee, and all payments made by the town should be approved by this committee. This project lost the public's trust a very long time ago. Let's get it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mackin. Do, I believe that Counselor Connors had raised her hand for the second time. But I believe that Counselor Borica has her hand raised the first time. So Counselor Connors, I'm aware that you had your hand up. But I'm going to go to District Five Counselor, Counselor Borica. Before I do, I just remembered I did recognize Counselor Flaherty, and I did not note, as I have with everyone else, her district. So that was Counselor One, District One Counselor. Counselor Flaherty spoke earlier. Now turning to District Five Counselor, Counselor Borica.
Thank you very much. I just, I want to follow up on Counselor Flaherty's question, so I'm 100% clear. Are we saying the pool on the grounds of Braintree High School will not be able to host the Braintree High School swim and dive teams so that they're going to have to pay fees out of town to practice and compete? Because I, if that is the case, and again, I just want to echo Counselor Flaherty's extremely disappointing and frankly just does not pass the common sense test when we're going to have a pool that's been 55 years in the making or more now, and our high school students are not going to be able to use it to compete?
Counselor Borica, was, just to state, anything else to add or was it more of just a statement?
I just want to make sure that was, sorry, thank you, Counselor. Is that, is that correct in saying that the pool will not be able to be utilized for our high school team to compete in for either swimming or diving?
Chief of Staff Tob, I believe you answered this, but could you answer that again?
So my understanding is that it can be used, but there will be points deducted because of the lack of a diving board. So there will be no diving board, so certainly the diving team would not be able to utilize it. But the swim team, I suppose, could.
Thank you, Counselor Boric. Anything further? Thank you, Counselor Borica. At this juncture, I would turn to Counselor Shasha of District Two for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to say that this is a really tough issue for everyone I know. And I know, Mayor Kikoris, you inherited this, but you know, I think a lot of what the counselors are expressing is coming from the residents. And you know, if, if there is anything that can be done to Counselor Mackin's point about having some, some resident involvement in this project as it goes forward and making sure that, you know, these issues with the diving board. You know, I get the sense that people are questioning at this point, is, is this still the project that we want? And I know that there are contractual issues involved, but I would just say anything that can be done along, along what Counselor Mackin suggested in, in having some resident involvement, oversight in this project would really, I think, go a long way at this point where we find ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shasha. I see no other councils with their hand raised currently. So I return to District Three Counselor Connors for the second time.
No, I just want to make a clarification. The original RFP proposal that was accepted did have a full-size Olympic pool in their proposal. When they went to the ground lease, it was changed to a junior-sized Olympic pool, which I don't understand how that could be done without some documentation getting to that point. But I would also like to express my severe disappointment in the fact that the Braintree swim team will not be able to utilize this pool. I know it's a fact that's been out there for a while, and we've been trying to bring it up. And hopefully tonight it gets across to everybody that there's an issue with how this pool is being built. The emphasis should be on the pool, not on icing rinks. And I get we're a nice skating town, but this focus should be, the money should be spent on a pool, not an ice rink. That's all I have to say. And I agree with Counselor Mackin on an oversight at this point as well.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. I would recognize District One Counselor Julia Flaherty for the second time.
Thank you. I just want to comment that in my conversations with architects and drainage experts, what they tell me is that any piece of land can be dried out so that you can dig a well or a, you know, a foundation for a 12-foot pool. It may be more, more expensive or less expensive depending on the, depending on the conditions on the ground. And I can fully recognize that these conditions may not be very favorable to that. But that it is impossible, I don't think that that is technically true. I think it can be done. It's just expensive to do. And, but to not do it really fundamentally violates the entire purpose of this project from the outset. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Did any other counselors wish to comment? Seeing none, there was obviously a lot of discussion on this topic tonight. There's a lot of, I think, issues from various folks about some of these things. Although it's great to see it moving forward, obviously it's something that we'll have to check back in on at some point. Counselor Mackin, you had a semi-proposal. If that's something that you wanted to move forward on, I would just suggest that you contact Clerk Semino and President Hume to get that on the agenda. I will not close this conversation out right now because Counselor Mackin has raised his hand. So I would recognize District Six Counselor Mackin for the second time.
Just thought of this right now, but do you think an appropriate way would be to make a motion for it now and take a vote on it if we do form such a committee?
Where this was just listed tonight under Communications Reports. It wasn't on as an agenda item. I would suggest the most appropriate thing from open meeting perspective would be to get it on the agenda officially.
You got it.
Thank you, Counselor Mackin. Just double checking, no other counselors wish to comment? Thank you to everyone for their questions, for their comments. Thank you to the, the answers to those comments and questions from Chief of Staff Tob, Mayor Kikoris, and Mr. Kikonos, if I'm saying that correctly. And obviously something it looks like we may be touching back on at some time. We're still on communications reports from the mayor and town boards. Mayor Kikoris is still with us. The next item we are going to discuss was 05120, Council President, the Master Plan Committee. Obviously, this is something that a lot of us have some concerns about and want to get moving forward. There are appointees that Mayor Kikoris was going to make. There was also appointee, two appointees that President Hume was going to make. Where President Hume couldn't be here tonight, I think it's most appropriate that we perhaps push off any announcements on this tonight. I move this to our next scheduled meeting a few weeks out, just as long as there's no objections from anyone on that. Seeing none. And Mayor Kikoris, thank you for being here, obviously, on a number of things, but we won't be getting to this tonight. So we'll probably have to invite you back to our next meeting. Moving on, the next few items we're going to discuss are going to involve Mayor Kikoris. I'm allowing him to make a statement. But first, as we first moved to old business, 20071 is the town clerk polling locations or taking up any action relative there to. That was discussed at our last meeting. Clerk Casey was before us requesting sort of some action on consolidation of polling places. That was tabled until January 2021, so we'll take that up after the new year. There's no discussion on this tonight, but I know a couple of residents have still had questions or concerns about the consolidation. If there are any questions or concern, you can email the council again. I'll give that email one more time. It's towncouncil@braintreema.gov, towncouncil@braintreema.gov. That will direct your questions or concerns to all members of the council for our consideration when we take this up in January of 2021. We are going to be going into some public hearings. Before we open up any of those or go into those, I would ask Mayor Kikoris to sort of make some blanket statements about all of the items we're about to entertain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Town Council members. I just wanted to do a little brief overview on 20076, 077, and 078. In the case of 076, we are looking to basically transfer 1.3 million, which was the amount that we had appraised the Allen Street project at. We ended up getting a bid of 1.5, but in order to close the books out for this year, that amount would need to be transferred from free cash. In addition, the next item, which is something that the governor put together in regards to COVID losses that occurred due to the pandemic and shutdowns. We were on schedule really to be profitable at the golf course in 2020. But because of COVID, we did sustain some losses, which we will amortize over the next few years. I'm very confident. I think our latest total is over 70% of our revenue has come in already, and we still have our wonderful summer months coming up to make even more revenue. So we've had a big turnaround there, and I, I really look forward to future revenues coming in. And, and I feel confident in this particular proposal. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Bob Brinkman, who is a town assessor director of that department, assessors Susan O'Brien, Robert Cusack, and Robert Conley, as well as my financial staff, Ed Spellman, and Chief of Staff Nicole Tob, for, you know, working to put together some really strong finances during a very bleak time for many communities. You know, we've seen a downturn in the business community that is unprecedented. I say often, it's like having every day is a snow day for these businesses. So with all that happening, they've done a great job at maintaining really strong financial stewardship and putting us in a position where we still are one of the lowest tax rates. And last year, we were at $9.86 on the thousand. This year, we're at $9.96 on the thousand. So our, our numbers have certainly stayed consistent as far as our tax rate on the residential side as well. We will be recommending tonight that you choose the maximum shift of 175. We do have really a real estate explosion going on, and those numbers keep climbing. They're climbing at a rate that exceeds our business properties. So this year alone, we, we have an increase of nearly 20,000, and we've increased from 2,593,000 to 521,835 over the one-year period. So there's, there's been a steady increase. It just really speaks to the strength of our community as a whole, how our town is, is run and operated, how great a job our employees do, how great our school system is, our police fire DPW. Those are the, you know, the things, the caveats that create our strength, and it creates the ability for us to have increase, increases in home value as well as the fact that we have this split, that we have the ability to shift away from the residents and allow the fact that we do have some, you know, some traffic issues and other things that are caused by our large business developments, that they're able to absorb some of the tax rate that attacks dollar amounts that residents would normally pay in other communities. You know, we are by far one of the greatest, if not the greatest, community to live in based on the services that we provide for the tax amount that we charge. And, you know, the residents of our community have done a great job in supporting our community even through these COVID times. We see so many great things happening here in Braintree. You know, our overall goal at this point is to continue to promote redevelopment of our business districts so that we can really create some more recurring revenue as well as the fact that, you know, we have such a, a strong financial team with lots of experience. And that has really helped me through the last 11 months, now, now on our 12th month. So I just want to, you know, I want to give a special thanks to them and, and really, you know, thanks to our Board of Assessors who come with great experience and knowledge and, you know, work through these numbers and make these recommendations to you as I make to you to maintain this strong financial picture that we have and to keep Braintree, Braintree's tax rate one of the lowest and keep our home values very strong. So, you know, I ask, the, the town council is, was asked of me when I sat in your seat to approve the 1.175 shift, the maximum shift, to protect our residents from any more increase in taxes. And at this point, we're looking at an increase of $241 for the average home in Braintree. I think that we provide so many great services and will continue to do that. And I appreciate any support, all the support from the council. And I know that the Ways and Means Committee has worked hard through these issues and, and appreciate the favorable recommendation that you have presented to the full council. And I thank you for all the hard work that you guys have put together on this. And once again, ask for your support on all three of these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kikoris. We are going to be moving into those three items now. I know we have a significant amount of people that are sort of joined in watching on the Zoom. Just so you know, there are three separate order numbers, 20076, 077, and 078. All of those will be public hearings. We will open a public hearing, allow comments from the council and anyone who is sort of from the mayor's office who wants to make further comments. And then I will open it up to the public. We'll then close the public hearing, vote on that particular order, and then We'll then close the public hearing, vote on that particular order, and then do the same thing for seven seven and seven eight as well. So when you're making comments, if you are a member of the public, just make sure it is related to the order number that we're currently talking about or debating. So with that said, moving to twenty zero seven six, Mayor FY twenty twenty one supplemental appropriation number one or taking up any action relative there to, is there a motion to open the public hearing on twenty zero seven six?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Counselor Ryan, I believe that was a second from Counselor Connors. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor.
That is unanimous. That does officially open the public hearing on twenty zero seven six. I am going to first refer to Council Boerica, District Five Council, also the chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means for her recommendation, although I believe that Mayor Kokoros stole your thunder and gave a favorable recommendation.
Yep, we, yeah, thank you, Mayor Kokoros for that. But just to give a little bit of background, especially for residents who may be listening in, the mayor's office requested that the council approve a transfer of one point three million dollars from our free cash reserves. That is the unrestricted part of our town's budget in order that the state may certify our tax rate on time. Once the sale of the property at Allen Street is complete, that free cash will be replenished. And it's also notable that our town auditor also reviewed this request and was comfortable with this transfer as a way to fully fund the budget that we approved back in June. So the Ways and Means Committee met earlier this evening, and as Mayor Kokoros stated, we are sending this to the council with a full unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I really can echo. All right, does anyone from the mayor's office, I know that Mayor Kokoros gave us a pretty thorough explanation. Does anyone from the mayor's office want to offer anything further? Seeing none. Does any member of the council wish to comment or ask questions on this? I see that District Three Counselor Donna Connors has raised her hand. Counselor Connors?
I just want to add in that during discussions, the sale of this property is one point five million dollars. So that the additional two hundred thousand, not two million, Nicole. Well, I made a typo last, last meeting. The additional two hundred thousand is slated to go into the free cash, hopefully to make up for some of the free cash that we've had to utilize this year. So that's where the difference is going to go in the end. That's all. Thank you.
Any other councils wish to comment? Seeing none. Again, I would just remind any participants that they can raise their hand using the raise hand function, or they can text three three nine nine eight seven two seven two six if they have any questions on any of these items tonight. Again, that's three three nine nine eight seven two seven two six. So does any member of the general public wish to ask any questions or comment on order twenty zero seven six? I see no hands raised, and I believe Clerk Samino is shaking her head that she hasn't gotten any text messages. All right, so with that said, I would ask if there is a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ryan. You guys are jumping around on me. That was a second from Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero post.
Okay, so that officially closes the public hearing as to twenty zero seven six. Do I have a motion?
So the motion is that the sum of one point three million be transferred from free cash for the purpose of replacing the revenue source of sale of town owned land that did not take place in time to be used for the FY twenty twenty one budget. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ryan, a second by Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero post.
So that is unanimous vote, and the motion as to twenty zero seven six passes. Moving on to twenty zero seven seven, Mayor, adoption of deficit amortization, I can never say that word, amortization schedule for FY twenty twenty or take up any action relative there to, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ryan, a second by District Four Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero post.
And that is unanimous. We have now opened the public hearing as to twenty zero seven seven. I would first turn to District Five Counselor and Chairwoman of the Committee of Ways and Means, Council Boerica.
Thank you very much, Council Ringus. And this one in particular has to do with the golf course. So as a result of the pandemic, as we all know, the golf course was forced to shut down for about fifty three days. And this resulted in a deficit of approximately three hundred and forty six thousand dollars. Our town auditor did join us at our Ways and Means Committee meeting earlier tonight. He could not join us here, but he did provide us with a succinct explanation, which I think is helpful in explaining this motion. So I'm going to read that now, or portions of it. In prior years, when the Golf Course Enterprise Fund has been in a deficit, the Massachusetts Department of Revenue requires this deficit to be subsidized by the general fund. However, due to the loss of revenue in fiscal year twenty twenty caused by COVID nineteen, the town has another option. This option spreads out the deficit over three years, allowing the Golf Course Enterprise Fund to whittle the deficit away on its own. So basically, we all know the golf course has done an outstanding job pivoting and has really, in so many ways, provided a bright spot for the town this year. So this is a way, and this is coming from the state, for the golf course to spread its losses out over a three-year term. So, you know, on behalf of the Ways and Means Committee, definitely want to thank Mr. Brown and his team for all of their efforts this year at the golf course. And with all that being said, the Ways and Means Committee sends this to the council as well with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Council Boerica. Does anyone, I know, again, Mayor Kokoros gave us a pretty good summation of this. Does anyone from the mayor's office want to speak as to order twenty zero seven seven?
The only thing, Mr. President, that I would add for folks wondering why this wasn't utilized for prior year's deficits, this was part of a special act that the governor signed that went into effect in April that was directly related to try to help cities and towns address the challenges created by COVID nineteen. And so by being able to spread out the debt in three equal payments over the next three fiscal years with the council's approval, as the chairwoman said, it would be paid from the golf fund itself. If at any point during that time, the town wished to accelerate those payments, it would have to come back before the council and seek further approval. Otherwise, with approval this evening, there would be no further appropriation required to cover the full amount of the debt over the subsequent three fiscal years, this fiscal year and the next two fiscal years.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Tob. I see I do have some counselors who have some questions. I would first turn to District Two Counselor Sasha.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify for the residents, since I don't think any residents decided to join us for the scintillating Ways and Means Committee where we went into detail on these. But these are, both the last one and this one, are measures that we have to take in order to do the tax rate classification. They do not necessarily mean that these items are going to be impacting free cash or deficits going forward as we get to the end of the fiscal year, which is still several months away. It's just a temporary thing to get through December so we can do the tax rate classification. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sasha. I think everything we do is scintillating here. But moving on, I would turn to Counselor at Large, Charles Ryan.
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, the golf course has been doing great work. The, for all of two thousand twenty, when the golf course opened, it's been busy up there, and you really can't even get a tee time anywhere. Tee times are booked very far in advance, and I think we're going to see that continue through the end of this year, as long as the weather's nice and into the spring. So I think they're going to continue to succeed up there, and I think good things are happening up the golf course, and I commend Darren Brown and his team for all the hard work they're doing up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Moving on to District Three Counselor Donna Connors.
So I too just want to add a clarification to the discussions we had earlier. It was also discussed that if, for some reason, the golf operating budgets, this will be put into the golf operating budget for fiscal year twenty two and twenty three. And that if, for some reason, the operations funds cannot cover it from the golf, it will have to come out of other operating funds or supplemental appropriations in the next couple of fiscal years. So if they cannot cover it, it will have to come out of free cash probably at the end, or a rearrangement of the operating budget for the golf. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Connors. I see that District Four Counselor O'Brien has raised his hand. Counselor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past years, Darren and working with the administration has done a tremendous job in trying to turn the golf course towards positive revenue. Unfortunately, this is a negative impact, and there's nothing we can do. It was unforeseen. So, you know, kudos to the administration and kudos to Darren for doing a tremendous job. My only question is, because I don't really have anything to say more than that, you know, kudos, and hopefully the weather would continue like it was this past weekend, it would have more people out golfing. But I don't think that's going to be the case for too long. My question is, and it could be for Chief of Staff Taub, which is, if we can accelerate the payments, I think I said that correct, didn't I? If we could accelerate the payments, if the revenue was positive, could we also pay it down if, for some reason, the governor saw it in his almighty wisdom under the new administration, the federal administration, if we get reimbursed, is it a trickle down? Or would it be best for us to lobby the governor now to say, if you get something from almighty Uncle Sam, you know, let's put it towards things such as this? What would be your guidance on that? And I, you know, the mayor can speak, whatever.
Like a race to unmute.
You win.
No, no, sir. No, sir. You know, the Counselor Brian, I think you raise a good point. I mean, right now, I think, as we all know, and as we talked about at the last meeting, all of the reimbursement, whether it's through FEMA or whether it's through CARES, is reimbursement. And there's an express prohibition against utilizing those funds for revenue replacement. The mayor continues to request and advocate for an expansion of the use of those funds for revenue replacement, which would include certainly not just loss at the golf course, but also could include loss through meals tax and through rooms tax that we've experienced, that we also talked about at the last meeting. So the way that the statute is written, it allows for, you know, three equal payments in fiscals twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. And so I think the most conservative approach, given what we have available to us now, was to take advantage of the full three-year option. But certainly, if the opportunity were to present itself, to either pay it sooner because the golf course continues to be so successful or additional funds become available to cover this cost, we do always have the option to come back and adjust the payment schedule that's before you for your consideration this evening.
Okay, thank you. Hope is not a strategy, but let's hope that something comes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brian. Thank you, Chief of Staff Tob. Any other counselors wish to speak on this? Seeing no hands raised, do any members of the general public wish to comment on this? And I'll wait a moment to give you time, if you want to get your hands up or to text. Okay, I see no hands raised. Clerk Samino shaking her head, no texts received. I think I would just sort of piggyback on what a lot of folks have said tonight. There's a lot of good things going on at the golf course, and if it wasn't for COVID, much like many businesses, I think we would have seen even more growth. The golf course was really taking off before. But it took a little hiccup with some of the COVID shutdowns, but it is now back up and running, at least in some capacity. And as we hopefully continue to beat COVID and get some vaccines out there and things reopen back up eventually, I think we'll just see continued growth and continued success there. So thank you to Mr. Brown for the work that you and your staff have done and are doing. And we'll look forward to moving past this twenty twenty and then getting back to, getting back to some fun stuff. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. With that said, is there a motion to close the public hearing as to twenty zero seven seven?
So moved.
There was a motion by Counselor Ryan, and there was some sort of cell phone beeping. I believe it was Counselor Connors that seconded it. It was Counselor, that was Counselor Ryan?
It was.
Counselor O'Brien, can I have a roll call vote, Clerk Samino?
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero post.
That is unanimous, and the motion to close public hearing as to twenty zero seven seven passes. Do I have a motion as to the underlying order?
Yes, a motion that the town council adopt the following deficit amortization. You got me screwing it up now too, Dave. Schedule for the payment of the FY twenty golf deficit in the amount of three hundred and forty five thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifteen cents. Without further appropriation, FY twenty one, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty eight cents. FY twenty two, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty eight cents. And FY twenty three, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty nine cents. So moved.
I have a motion by Counselor Ryan, a second by Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero post.
That is unanimous, and the motion as to twenty zero seven seven passes. Moving on to twenty zero seven eight, the mayor tax rate classification or taking up any action relative there to. This again is a public hearing. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion by Counselor Ryan, a second by Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero post.
That is unanimous, and the motion to open the public hearing as to twenty zero seven eight passes. I would first refer once again to Council Boerica, the chairperson of the Committee of Ways and Means.
Thank you very much. Again, the committees met earlier this evening, and I know Mayor Kokoros gave a nice thorough recap about the tax rate classification. Just a few things I think it is worth noting and remembering that our property taxes, so our homes, commercial and industrial base, are the single biggest contributor to our town's budget, comprising almost seventy percent of the budget. So this is really a critical component to maintaining our strong community and providing the outstanding services that we all count on and deserve. And as it has been mentioned several times, the rate we pay in Braintree is exceptionally low on the South Shore. And, you know, when you think about the And, you know, when you think about the quality of the services we receive in town, the public spaces we have, and our public servants who take care of us and our town, it really is a bargain. So, you know, thank you to not only the Assessor's Office, but truly to all of the residents, because this is how all of us do our part to make the community that we have and that we, that we all love. So the Ways and Means Committee again sent this census to the full council tonight with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Council Borica. I would note that we have some various folks in attendance on our Zoom here. In regards to this, we have Robert Brinkman, our Deputy Assessor, along with members of our Board of Assessors, Robert Cusack, Susan O'Brien, and Robert Conley. In addition, we still have Mayor Kokorski on board, as well as Chief of Staff Taub. And I think the, the one who has all the answers all the time, Ed Spellman, is also available here for questions as well. So thank you, Ed, for being here. Does anyone from the mayor's office want to speak further on order 20078? Seeing none. Do any counselors have any questions or want to speak on order 20078? I see a hand raising. I turn to District Four Counselor Steve O'Brien.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I do also want to thank that man in the corner, Mr. Spellman, Director Spellman, for his effort, because, and I'm glad you did mention him, because I was going to. So you took my thunder, but that's okay. Thank you for all you do. The only purpose for my hand raising is to let the residents know that this body does not approve the rate per se. We are approving the classification shift. We are approving the small business, business exemption. We are approving the open space discount, and we're approving the residential exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brian, for those notations and clarification for anyone watching at home. Any other counselors wish to comment on this? Seeing no hands raised. I would ask if there are any members of the general public who wish to comment on this, and I'll give you a moment if you wanted to use the raise hand function, or once again, text Clerk Samino at 339-987-2726. Wait a few seconds. I see no hands raised from the general public. Clerk Samino shaking her head. She's received no text messages. So thank you to everyone who's been watching here at home. With that said, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, a second by Council O'Brien. Clerk Samino, can I have a roll call vote?
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous, and the motion of 20078 to close the public hearing passes. We're now going to turn to the actual underlying motions as Counsel O'Brien kind of laid out in terms of what we're looking at in terms of the tax rate classification and various exemptions. So there are four separate motions that we'll be voting on this evening. Do I have a motion as to the tax rate classification shift?
So the motion is, be it ordained that the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, adopt the recommendation of the mayor and the Board of Assessors to approve the classification tax rate shift of 175% to be applied to commercial, industrial, and personal property. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, I have a second by Council O'Brien. Clerk Samino, can I please have a roll call vote?
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous, and so the motion as to the tax rate classification does pass. Do I have a motion as to the small business exemption?
Motion to approve the small business exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors in a memorandum to the town council dated November 17, 2020, and is filed with the office of the town clerk. So moved.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, a second by Council O'Brien. Clerk Samino, can we please have a roll call vote?
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous, so the motion as to the small business exemption does pass. Moving on, do I have a motion as to the open space discount?
Motion to continue the, to adopt the recommendation of the mayor and the Board of Assessors as outlined in a memorandum to the town council dated November 17, 2020, and as filed with the office of the town clerk to decline the open space discount. So moved.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, I have a second by Council O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous, so the motion as to the open space discount does pass. Moving on to our fourth and final motion, do I have a motion as to the residential exemption?
The motion is to continue to adopt the recommendation of the mayor and the Board of Assessors as outlined in a memorandum dated November 17, 2020, and is filed with the office of the town clerk to decline the adoption of the residential exemption. So moved.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, a second by Council O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous, and the final motion as to 20078 as to the residential exemption does pass. Thank you to all of those who are here tonight from our Board of Assessors and from the mayor's office in regards to that and the other two orders we dealt with today. Moving on to 20079, mayor, appointment of Therese Dunne and Jarrett to the cultural council or taking up any action relative there to. My understanding is that this is actually tabled at Ways and Means tonight, so we will not be taking any action on it tonight. Clerk Samino, do we need to table that here?
Yes, please.
Can I have a motion to table 20079?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, a second by Counselor O'Brien to table 20079. Clerk Samino, can I have a roll call vote?
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Hi.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. That is unanimous, so that will be tabled to a further date. It will also be taken up by Ways and Means at a further date as well. That concludes our old business for the evening. Moving on to new business, we have 05220, council president, 2021 town council meeting calendar. I would ask all counselors, per President Hume, to please review the 2021 calendar that is proposed and was part of your packet. We will adopt it at our next town council meeting, which is currently scheduled on December 15 of 2020. We just recently dealt with town council rules. That was, that was a great time. But one of the rules that we had was that the town council meeting calendar shall be reviewed and adopted within 30 days after the first council meeting in every year. So with that said, I don't think I need any motion there, right, Clerk Samino?
No motion.
Yeah. So moving on to our referrals, we do have one referral to our Committee on Ways and Means. That is 20080, mayor requests for the appropriation of a skate park replacement design service or taking up any action relative there to. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Council Ryan, a second by Council O'Brien. Clerk Samino can have a roll call vote on that referral to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume is not present. Council Mackin.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
And that is unanimous, and that will be referred to our Committees on Ways and Means. I would just note, it's great to see yet another public improvement. We dealt last meeting with a lot of walking trails and increasing, and something to update our skate park would obviously be a great sort of benefit to our, to our, to the youth of our city or the adults that are still skateboarding as well. So that's, I look forward to that. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, December 15, 2020, at 7:30 PM. Thank you to all those who attended tonight, all those at home, and to B-CAM for their continually to record us and provide it to the community at large. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Council Ryan, a second by Council O'Brien to adjourn this meeting. Clerk Samino, can I have a roll call vote?
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Hi.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Mackin.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Hi.
Council Ringus.
Hi.
Council Ryan.
Hi.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
And the motion to adjourn passes. Thank you all, and hope to see many of you Saturday at the Phila Cruiser event and seeing Mayor Kokorski and his Santa hat if you like the Christmas tree. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.